Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, and just.
Good morning and welcome to the August 21st edition of the Board of Commissioners meeting. First of all, I want to apologize to Tim for not giving you a head start in the meeting. Really even reminded me. So I do want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting and we are being recorded via audio and video and we are following the state mandated hybrid meeting laws, awards, recognitions, and correspondence. Do you have anything?
I do not.
I don't?
I do. So we are actually, I'm going to, myself and my fellow commissioners, highly support the development of our county managers and employees. One of the programs we champion is the National Association of Counties, NACO, High Performance Leadership Academy. The NACO High Performance Leadership Academy is an innovative 12-week program created to equip frontline county government professionals with practical leadership skills to deliver results for counties and communities. With a robust curriculum developed by the professional development communities, community in partnership with Fortune 1000 executives, public sector leaders, world-renowned academics, and throughout leaders, including General Colin Powell and Dr. Marshall Goldsmith, HPLA was designed specifically for the unique challenges and opportunities of serving in county government. As the inaugural graduate of the Yuma-Tilla County High, let me try that again, as the inaugural graduate of the Yuma-Tilla County High Performance Leadership Program, I can confidently validate its value. The county aims for all county managers to participate in this esteemed program. To date, Yuma-Tilla County has graduated 25 managers and we'd like to recognize them at this time. So I'm going to come up to the front and Jennifer's going to help me and I'll call you up one at a time. Something special for you. Rachel Rims. Yeah, sorry. So Rachel is a graduate of 2022 and she's also completed the leading analytics course. Congratulations. And that's the original courthouse, by the way, or the old courthouse, I should say. Yeah, yeah, don't leave yet. Bob Walder, 2022. Oh, oh, you. Dale Primmer, how did you manage to graduate? Thank you. And Digna Moreno. Jim Myers. Congratulations. Karen Primmer. Paul Overton.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
John Felter, who is not here, but we've got one for him as well. Tim Beck. Tim has also completed the Leading on Purpose course. Don Skinner. Back here is Rick Partlow, we have a point for him. Stephanie Miller. Mr. Hernandez. Oh, you. I was going to say, that's not Mitch, but. Lieutenant Justin Russell. Emirates Manager Sage DeLonge, who is not here. Alicia Lundgren, also not present today. Amy Pearson. Mackenzie Bowie.
Did I pronounce that right?
The next two are not here, Lola Lopez and Megan Dubchak. Morgan Linder is not here. And the Sheriff, Jim Littlefield. We'd also like to recognize Riley Workman and Dan Lani who completed the cybersecurity leadership course in 2023. We want to thank and congratulate all of you for your dedication to Yuma-Tilla County. Starting in August 2024, we are pleased to announce that seven more managers have been selected to participate in the High Performance Leadership Course. We look forward to supporting them and reaching their professional goals. As commissioners, we're proud to support this initiative. So at this time, we'd like to call you all up for a photo with everybody.
Are people in the front?
You guys can be down in the front, like.
I know.
I'm going to have to pretend like we like them.
There you go, there you go. You're going to have to get back.
I'm going to have to stand.
Stand on a chair here.
There we go.
We got a little bit more in here now.
I'm all good right here. You're absolutely perfect.
Okay, perfect. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Escape while we can.
Yeah, I know.
Sorry, I like that.
There's a markup.
Bye.
I saw where 101 is in the 40. That could be fall around.
With that, we are back on track with approval of minutes from previous meeting on August 7th, 2024. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second, all for the motion, say aye. Aye. Any additional agenda? And now it's time for public input of recognition of visitors. If you have something you want to address to the commissioners, if it's not any agenda, now is your time for that. Here you can see none, both in person and online. We will jump right into our agenda. Item number one, IT maintenance payable.
Did you want me to? It actually has mine. Good morning, commissioners. Dan Lani with Director of Administrative Services. And before you is a pinky for maintenance for our data center here at the courthouse. We have two options. The first option is paying for the maintenance for one year for the, it's all the servers basically that we have at the courthouse and the backup system. And it's $33,693 for a year. It came with a three-year maintenance included in the system and now it's, it's started its fourth year. So that's why we are now with that maintenance. If we went though and signed the agreement to pay for all three, the next three years upfront, so it takes us out to six years with that, all the other from when we purchased it, would be $83,809, which saves us $17,270 altogether. But as things go up the next two years, we probably actually save more than that, be probably closer to 20. But I can't project what it would be going up each year. So we're talking about about the $20,000 savings in reality there if we went with the three years. But originally didn't realize we could do that option until when we did our budgeting and everything, we weren't planning for $83,000 still this year. That's the best way to go. But we may at the end of this fiscal year, once we pay for all of our maintenance, then we might have to lose some money out of contingency. Robert is aware of it. But yeah, no problem. He's not here.
After we discuss this, I do have a couple of follow-up questions. One, so the full, what we're covering is three or four pieces of hardware, is that true?
Well, if we want to go down on the equipment, there's five, six, seven, there's at least seven pieces of hardware.
Of those seven pieces, some of them are much older than others.
No, they're all the same. We all bought them all at the same time, three, three years ago. It was a package system.
Will all these pieces of equipment last another three years?
Yeah, they usually, we project five to seven years, what we do on everything and we end up more pushing everything to that seventh year. Try to shoot to replace stuff in the sixth year. They would last that long. It's quite a robust system. It's redundant. One system goes down, all the servers switch, it's a virtual system, they all switch over to the other. The backups are actually replicated to the other data center that we have too. So it's quite a, quite a function.
This morning, you should take us through the life of those pieces of equipment. Is there any plans on adding equipment to that?
The only thing we would probably may add would be if we increase our disk space, which the unit has more space to put into it. And that's one thing we've been looking at. So that's what's called a stand. It's a big huge disk server or disk drives in it and we can add additional disk drives to that unit. So that would be, we're going to be replacing or adding other equipment, but we may add extra. Yeah.
Cover that.
Yeah, there wouldn't be any road extra cost for adding extra hardware. Except for buying the hard drives. Maintenance wise.
All the questions I have.
Okay, I noticed that the savings really comes in on those maintenance renewals. Why is that?
Because you're locking in with them a three-year contract. And so, you know, here's the big thing, during this, my sales look better at the end of this year, this quarter, because I locked in this contract of, you know, for $80,000 instead of $33,000. So that's what promotes them to do it. What's the benefit for us is we don't have to, we save some money over time. And usually most things go up at 10% yearly. So you figure next year, if it's $33,000 this year, it'll go up 10%. So another $3,000. And so it'll probably be 36 year after that, and then 39. And so by, by going forwards for us, we save some extra money on that. It's actually, no, I can't tell you what their minds actually.
Yeah, I was just looking that over and I thought, you know, the, the top two items, those are pretty much, you know, they stay in line. But it's those bottom two, it's the maintenance renewals where you really have the savings. So I was just curious.
I'd like to add on that the older the equipment is, the more they charge as well. So if you do it while it's still three years old, they charge less than if you're doing it when it's five or six years old.
Thank you.
There actually comes a point where they won't maintain things. So it's good to lock in.
What does maintenance mean? Does that mean they come on site or is it all online?
So this is our big data center. So they have within four hours to respond to things and then they immediately overnight ship equipment if we have to have it replaced and bring in a technician to replace that. So usually it's next day if we use a piece of equipment.
Do they come in and do an annual cleaning and?
They don't do anything along those lines, no. But also part of the maintenance is technical support, which we use a lot.
Out of curiosity, how much did those eight servers or seven servers cost last year?
So we bought three years ago, it was $358?
No, 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 I mean hours, how many hours?
We used quite a bit of technical support. So Eric was on the phone with, um, I think like a couple hours at least once a month at minimum. And that was to make sure, you know, we had, if there's upgrades to the firmware, if there's software things that we're not sure about, we can contact them and make sure those are appropriately applied. We had, you know, a previous system, when we had a hard drive fail, we were able to get that replaced within a day. But since it's a redundant system and we can lose several hard drives before we have to replace them. And so it's one of those where it's really nice to have that set up. So if we, we have to replace the hard drive, they just, hey, we noticed your hard drive failed. This one's on its way.
We usually get notified on that via email before we actually walk in there and look at it.
Thank you. And entertain a motion.
I move to approve and sign the attached agreement with Dell in the amount of $83,809 for a three-year maintenance contract.
Second, any further discussion? Can I motion say aye? Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
IT subscription payable.
Morning commissioners, Riley Workman, IT. So before you is our, NOBE4, is this one?
Yeah.
It's the NOBE4 subscription. We're renewing it for three years at the cost of $24,964.20. We use NOBE4 as a training platform for new employees and continuing training of current employees. And that helps improve our cybersecurity, just having the employees trained on what to look for phishing-wise and whether, you know, emails coming in on what may or may not be an attack. Is included in this. So this also includes our FISH ER system, which allows us to pull back emails that are known bad emails, which we've used a lot this year. It goes through and all the emails that comes in when it detects an email, we've got it connected into Google. And when it detects an email that is a known phishing attack, it'll notify us and then we're able to actually pull those emails out of people's inboxes before they even see it most of the time. It also works with if people, if you use your fish hook to report an email, we're able to look at that and go, yes, this was a phishing attack. And then say, hey, FISH ER, go out and look for other emails that are sent from the same person, have the same subject, maybe has similarities in the body and pull those emails as well. So it's.
Yesterday I fish hooked something and I never heard back on whether it was safe or unsafe. I mean, is there a way that we go like that?
So the FISH ER actually uses artificial intelligence and it's, it's scanning those things when you fish hook it. So we don't have to do anything and it will determine if it's malicious spam. And you should have got something, mine came back in your spam coder. If you did fish hook it, you should, you should have responded and at least told you it was good.
We'll, we'll check on it. I know there are.
You hit one that if it's good.
Right. If it's, if it's good, it'll, it'll pop back into your inbox. And if it's bad, we usually just, if it's spam or stuff, we won't push those back or phishing, you know, we won't, we won't push those back into your system.
Yeah, I'm just curious, was it good, was it bad?
Right. Oh, look, I, I don't know if we can notify, I mean, I think we can set up notifications to say, hey, good job, this was a phishing attack. And, but I'll, I'll double check and see if we can set something up for that.
But this doesn't, this is not the Adobe.
This is the NOBE4 training. It's training and the FISH ER, it, it covers our subscription for that for three years.
How many Adobe subscriptions do we have?
Adobe, I'm not sure on. I'd have to look that up. But we, we do have quite a few. Adobe, we sent that out because they're switching from permanent licenses to just doing cloud subscription. And we have, we have quite a lot of people using Adobe. But this is a different system.
This is not.
This isn't, doesn't go through Adobe. This is, this is the fish hook.
I got it. You started out with Adobe's.
So yeah, we're, what we're asking is that we renew this subscription for three years, totaling the $24,964.20.
Let's move for approval.
Motion, second, all for the motion, say aye? Aye.
Thank you.
I'm up again. So this is, we're requesting approval of purchase of an air-dapped backup solution in the amount of $323,173. So IT and EM Emergency Management applied last year for the state and local government cybersecurity program grant through OEM for this project. And it's been awarded, it's a reimbursement grant. So we actually have to purchase the system to get reimbursed for the full amount. And I believe we've sent documents to you on what the system looks like and.
We discussed this in meeting there. And after talking with Sage DeLonge, the, the engineering portion will go qualify as the training and planning portion. So that it should be all, be reassured it will be all covered under that.
And that, I know it's reimbursable, but is the grant itself been assigned?
It's been awarded, yes. So they've said, you've got this grant, you just need to do the purchase and go through the steps to be able to.
We already signed the agreement and OEM has signed it.
That's what I'm asking is OEM.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Like 80,000 more than the snowcat. I would move for approval.
Motion, second, all for the motion, say aye? Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Tax foreclosure notice. Our paper scissors for it.
What's coming to me before the board is an order to authorize the publication for the annual tax foreclosure. The, historically it's been done, the order would allow publication these are going in. And once this is published, then the.
I'd like to thank Assessment and Taxation for all their work on this, along with the, this new world we live in on how these are done, how they can be collected. Could be interesting in moving forward with this. I would move to adopt order TX2024-01.
My second, but I have a question. How many are there?
At this point, there are 30 accounts.
And because our newspaper situation has changed in the county last year, is newspaper the only way that we should go?
At this point, that's the only thing allowed by the statute. That there, all those statutes are being reviewed right now. So I think in the, the report I saw, that is one of the things they want to talk about.
But we could still publish it on our website.
We can certainly, it's an extra one. But the statute just requires it be published on a local newspaper.
Thank you.
Got a motion, second, all for the motion, say aye? Aye. Echo CVP grants.
Want me?
The Echo Community Benefit Plan Committee met and reviewed two grant applications. They're recommending one of them being funded. This is the second round for this year and there might be a third year. They have $40,000 available and they need just one grant, $28,000. And that grant is before the board for. That was for.
Backup generator?
No.
Can we read the block house?
It's for, yeah, it's, they're planning to hopefully replace the, they said made a.
A replica?
Yes, I think a replica of the old original block house. And so this goes towards a planning of it, of the engineering design.
Oh, Fort Henrietta.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this isn't, oh, this is design and engineering cost?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a motion on that? Motion, second, all for the motion, say aye? Aye. EOC A, board payable.
The annual dues to the Eastern Oregon. Foundation are before the board for approval. The, it's based on the amount of pill payments that the candidate receives. In that case, for the Yuma-Tilla County, it'd be $10,000. But there is an optional one for $5,000. So the total request is for $15,000, being the EOC A to the Yuma-Tilla.
I move for approval. Second, all for the motion, say aye? Aye. Order payable to the Corps.
Question for the board is to pay some additional administrative fees to the Army Corps of Engineers. This is for the easement for the pump station, for the central pipeline project. The current request is for $86,000 payable to the Corps. It's important for the work that they have done in processing the application to date, as well as anticipated for some of the, it doesn't mean that it's the final amount, but this is the current.
How much have we spent so far?
I believe around $100,000.
Does that include this?
No.
$86,000? So we'll be up to $186,000. And you think more's coming? Likelihood?
Possible.
They said that they, they, the last amount they have is dead up. And so now they need some additional money if they want to continue profit.
Approval of the payment to the Army Corps of Engineers.
Second, all for the motion, say aye? Fair payable.
This is coming before the board because of the dollar amount. This is for expenses that are related to the Latino night entertainment. It's payable to Velasco used car sales in the amount of $6,958. It's, there are a variety of things that are being reimbursed to the, some of the actual entertainment expenses, advertisement. some of the actual entertainment expenses, advertisement, and other.
I have a question on this. Do we have these type of expenses for all the entertainment at the fair?
Yes, for the advertisement and, and of course for the entertainment itself, yes. Those are paid directly.
Those are paid.
Right, right.
Not the same. They're the same, but different. Same expenses, build different.
Right. How did Velasco get involved in this?
Velasco's been involved.
Since the initial one, but I don't, we have the history on.
Yeah, no, uh, when we changed from Fiesta days to Latino days, uh, we, we had two Hispanic producers that we had issues with. Velasco's came forward and actually worked with Lucas. Um, Lucas Wagner was the contact on that. It's kind of been in that position as the Latino night producer for last.
Is there a motion?
Oh, I fucking need for approval.
It's a second, all of the motions say aye.
Aye.
There he is. BBG application.
Hey, um, the request is to have the county be the sponsor for a community development block grant and be the applicant. For the path project, uh, they're hoping to expand their indoor and outdoor kitchen, um, um, facilities. And that would qualify for a CDP grant. Um, this is just initiate the process to approve the county as the applicant. There would be additional work, including a public hearing on this if you approve it.
Let me make the statement that we don't have any in process right now. Is that, was I right?
The last one we had with, uh, Gopie House, it's closed down.
I would move for approval.
I think the amount is up to two hundred.
That's the grand amount?
The cap.
It may be three, but it's
Motion, second, all of the motions say aye.
Aye.
And just to PS on that is we both have to have a special meeting, right?
Yes, there's one schedule for Friday at three o'clock.
And Doug, I can make that.
Okay, last item, SMR legislation.
I would love to explain this one.
I would love to for you to do so.
So, uh, it's kind of been a discussion for some time now. Is SMR the small mod, small modular nuclear reactor in SMRs? What, what really drove this is we met with BMI and across the county, it's been brought up several times. We look at renewable energy in this very narrow focus of wind and solar. And what that, what those issues are, both land use wise, livability wise, visual wise, all of those different things play in. But not only, not only the physical structures of the solar and, and battery storage is you have to have transmission. And transmission lines, um, may or may not even be a bigger issue physically, environmentally, physically, all of those different things, aspects need to be taken in to affect. So the one thing that, that we've always had discussions is, well, how, how do we find solutions to mitigate some of the issues evolved around other renewable energy? So a zero carbon nuclear or small modular reactors, obviously option that is very doable. I mean, it still needs a lot of permitting, uh, both state and federal. There's a misnomer that the state of Oregon actually voted to ban nuclear energy. In reality, what the state of Oregon did through the referendum, uh, procedures and process was to make citing nuclear, um, reactors SMRs fall kind of in a, in a different area. Still very, very, um, onerous, very mind consuming to get them cited and permitted. But without legislation, we wouldn't be able to get to step one. Step one is the, the legislature approved. So what we're asking for, um, from this is for Umatilla County to be a pilot project for SMR technology and, uh, working with Tonkin Group and, uh, their legal staff. We will come up with three different alternative, like, pieces of legislative and language. And then what we'll do is make sure that we have the strongest points of all three, move forward with those at the end of the month. And make sure that, that, um, the process kind of begins to evolve through this long session, this long. What it means is probably a lot of trips to Salem by everybody, but, um, that the nice thing is, is that, uh, we've already had discussions with some of the, um, very people that have control over the legislation, whether it gets assigned or what committees and those type of things. There is obviously no guarantees. Do expect some pushback, but in reality, SMRs across the nation are becoming more and more, more and more focused for the solution to high energy demand, uh, eliminating transmission lines or eliminating a, a massive addition of transmission lines. Being able to be, uh, micro gridded, which means whether it's a hyperscale data center or fed directly into the PPA line. It can be built adjacent to, um, small modular reactors don't have a huge demand for water. They, they do use water, but it's not huge demand. And the safety is just out, out, out of the room as far as statistical safety. So what I'm asking is that Commissioners endorse, um, Umatilla County moving forward as a pilot, a pilot project to try to find solutions to our energy needs without, uh, without some of the, some of the drawbacks with large scale in solar and battery, uh, which include everything from setbacks to the use of EFU properties. Uh, all of those issues that create consternation throughout the county. If we can find solutions to those, maybe we can minimize the effects of solar restorage and others in a by With that, I'll make a motion for approval.
I have something to say. Um, for a second, this, uh, my hats off to you, Commissioner Doran, on this one. And the reason why is I think Umatilla County is the perfect place for a pilot project because, um, of our rural is one. The other one is, um, I think that if we, I think if people knew, um, all of the safeguards that they've now put in these SMRs for safety, it's going to be a marketing, um, you're going to have to do some marketing on this. But there's things already built into these that, um, make them safer than their nuclear reactor cousins, you know, all those years ago. Plus, um, when you, when you go to build these or manufacture these, they're done in a factory and then they're moved on site. And so they're modular. And so, um, you know, it's just a positive, a positive, a positive. Plus what we've got going in Umatilla County just lends itself to these. And so plus our location. So I think that was very futuristic thinking and I gladly second this. I think it's positive, positive all the way through.
Same. So we have a motion and a second. All of the motions say aye.
Aye.
If I could vote twice, I would. Uh, with that motion carries. Last, Commissioner Timmons.
No, I just, the only thing I would say is to reinforce the leadership today and and emphasize enough how important that is to the, the Commissioner Timmons mentioned the, the future of Umatilla County because we saw the future of Umatilla County here today.
Absolutely.
And that's just huge. That's it. And the program is just amazing. So glad, glad to be able to recognize him. I wish we
As liaison to the fair, do you want to mention anything about the fair?
Um, the, the one thing I can mention for sure, numbers are slow coming in, but we did actually go over one point five million.
Okay.
That's a huge, that's a huge number. Over two hundred and fifty thousand more than last year. Uh, sixty more animals. But it, uh, the bump program was just out of this world this year. Um, I know some of those kids think they did really well, but wait until they see their bump money because it's, it's, uh,
Over yet.
It's not over yet.
I heard something at the sale. Commissioner Doran sitting behind me, getting against me. Next time I'm going to make darn sure he's in front of me or I'm within sight of him. So Doran is up to.
It was definitely a successful fair. Our hats are off to all the volunteers who put in all those hours. Fair wouldn't happen without them, so.
Well, and the fair wouldn't happen without parents like, uh, Bob Walder sitting out there. You know, they're a huge part of the affair.
I'll never forget seeing Bob standing behind Grant when they were doing the final, um, odd talk, um, walkthrough for the, the grand championship. I think Bob was just as excited as Grant was when he won.
Absolutely. All right. On that note, we are adjourned. Thank you.